We reach out to both the Biden and Trump administrations, as well as the Israeli government for their response to these accusations, but have not received any response at this time. For more coverage and different perspectives on this conflict, you can go to npr.org/mideastupdates. And you've been listening to Here and Now.
Hi, I'm Alonzo Boden from Wait, Wait Don't Tell Me. I'm a car guy. I'm so into cars, I change cars like people change shoes. I figure over my lifetime, that's cost me probably the gross domestic product of New Zealand. Listen, when it's time for you to trade up, think about this station. Your old car could pay for Morning Edition or Wait, Wait Don't Tell Me. So come on, turn your old ride into the programs you love. Here's how.
For more information, go to our website, radioiq.org.
Hi, this is Steve Inskey. When you roll out of bed, bleary-eyed and groggy, if you're like me, the first thing on your mind is getting something to wake you up. So turn on the radio. NPR's daily news program, Morning Edition, has been working through the night to get you the news you need. It's as essential to your morning as a good cup of coffee. So hit the ground running by listening to Morning Edition from NPR News.
You can hear Morning Edition beginning weekdays at 5:00 AM on Radio IQ.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston, where the program is produced, and Viking, committed to exploring the world in comfort, offering small-ship experiences with a shore excursion included in every port, and programs designed for cultural enrichment. Learn more at viking.com. And Loomis Sales, working to fulfill the investment needs of institutional and retail clients worldwide by integrating proprietary research and risk analysis to develop a customized approach for each investor.
It's Here and Now. The city of Colorado Springs is home to a unique congregation that sprang up last year. It's called the Colorado Psychedelic Church. And as the name implies, it blends spirituality with the ceremonial use of psychedelics. These drugs are illegal in many parts of the U.S. They can be quite powerful and even dangerous. And as Colorado Public Radio's Haley Sanchez reports, "It's the substances that get people in the door, but community is what keeps them coming back."
Hey, y'all. I'm glad we waited.
On a rainy Tuesday evening, nearly 20 congregants enter through a walkout basement door. They quietly settle into a circle of couches. It looks like an ordinary book club or Bible study. Benji Dezival opens the weekly gathering at the church with a lecture similar to a sermon. Each week has a theme. This one's maternal energy.
Because when we say mother, most people, of course, will hear woman.
Forty-three-year-old Lee Need attends church events regularly. He works in nonprofit and moved to Colorado Springs from Houston last August, not knowing anyone. And within a week, he stumbled on the psychedelic church.
It's not just a bunch of people doing drugs in some guy's dingy basement. Like, it is nice down here.
Who desire to stand for a moment of silence or personal prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Amen, and thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, and welcome to our meeting for June 24th, 2024. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 2:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 6:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend the Board of Supervisors meeting should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. General reminder to please turn off all your cell phones or place them in silent mode during our meeting. We move to Item A, Opening Ceremonies. Item one is remote participation. And forgive me, I have to write this, read this statement for the people that aren't here. I was notified in writing by Mrs. Shepherd and Mr. Mahoney that they would be unable to physically attend the meeting because they are out of the Commonwealth, spending time with their respective families. Ms. Shepherd is with her family in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, and Mr. Mahoney is with his family in Fenwick Island, Delaware, both requested to participate in today's meeting by telephone. So pursuant to the Board's policy for participation in meetings through electronic communication, which was adopted by the Board on September 28th, 2022, I notified Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Mahoney that their requests complied with the Board's policy and were approved. So both requests and my determination, along with a copy of the policy, were therefore shared with you by email. At this time, I invite Ms. Shepherd to again state a request for the record and to assure that all members of the Board can hear you. Ms. Shepherd.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and fellow members of the Board. I today am in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, spending time with family and am unable to join you in person. I am in a private room, which is conducive to allowing me to participate in today's meeting by telephone. If the Board goes into closed session today, no third party will be able to hear or otherwise observe the closed meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. If anyone was unable to hear Ms. Shepherd's voice, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, nobody raised their hand. At this time, I invite Mr. Mahoney to again state his request for the record and to ensure that all members of the Board can hear him. Mr. Mahoney.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and my fellow Board members. Today, I am in Fenwick Island, Delaware, and I'm spending time with my family, and I'm unable to join you in person. I am in a private room, and it is conducive to allowing me to participate in today's meeting by telephone. Now, if the Board goes into closed session today, no other person, no third party, will be able to hear or to otherwise observe the closed meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. If anyone is unable to hear Mr. Mahoney's voice, please indicate by raising your hand. No hands are raised, thank you. The Board must now vote to, number one, ratify my decision that Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Mahoney's requests are in accordance with the Board's policy on remote participation, and, number two, confirm that Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Mahoney's voices can be heard by all persons at this location. All in agreement, please state yes when the clerk calls your name. Will the clerk please call the vote excluding Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Mahoney?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Thank you. It's confirmed that both Ms. Shepherd, Mr. Mahoney's requests are in accordance with our policy and that all, that all can hear each of them, and both remote participation requests are approved. We move to Item Two, Roll Call. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
We move to Item B, Request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda, fellow Board members?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lowry?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
I was gonna call you Lou back. Item C, Proclamations, and glad to have you here today, by the way. Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. Item number one, resolution congratulating Matthew Neal for being named the 2026 Virginia Teacher of the Year. Matt, if you'll meet me at the, at the diocese, I won't embarrass you too much. Is this the resolution? Okay. We'll stand over here together. Yeah, right over here. There you go. Clerk, you can call the, read the resolution.
Resolution congratulating Matthew Neal for being named the 2026 Virginia Teacher of the Year. Whereas Matthew Neal, a longtime English and journalism teacher at Hidden Valley High School, has been named the 2026 Virginia Teacher of the Year by Governor Glenn Youngkin, following his earlier recognition as the Region Six Teacher of the Year by the Virginia Department of Education. And whereas Mr. Neal has served as a dedicated educator and mentor for over 20 years, teaching English, journalism, and theater at Hidden Valley and K-Spring High Schools, it is known, and is known for his belief that every student can thrive when given the right support. And whereas Mr. Neal is recognized for his work in revitalizing the school's journalism program, maintaining a career SOL pass rate above 98%, and for leading impactful initiatives such as an opioid awareness campaign that significantly improved student engagement and gained state-level attention. And whereas he contributes to the broader school community through leadership roles, extracurricular involvement, and volunteer service, including coaching, student media, theater, and restorative justice mediation. And whereas his tireless efforts continue to reflect the best of public education and bring distinction and pride to Roanoke County public schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to Matthew Neal for his remarkable achievements and for being named the 2026 Virginia Teacher of the Year. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its appreciation for his lasting impact on students, families, and the Roanoke County community.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would love to make a comment if this is the appropriate time.
So I'm gonna play a video, and then I'll, I'll get the comments, if that's okay. So clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. All right, Matt, we're gonna play a little video real quick, okay?
The 2026 Teacher of the Year Award to Matthew Neal of Roanoke County Public Schools.
When I found out I was Roanoke County's first ever Teacher of the Year, I was blown away. I've worked with amazing teachers, day in and day out here in this county, so I couldn't believe I was the first one. But it's also really exciting to be the first and know that I'm not gonna be the last, because there's gonna, there's gonna be amazing teachers in Roanoke County. There have been for years, and there's gonna continue to be. And they're gonna go knock it out of the park as well at some point. What I really have learned is that it is just the greatest career. I get to see success. I get to see growth. I get to see kids take little steps and big steps every single day.
Appreciate it, Maggie.
And I don't think that there's a day that I'm like, oh, gosh, I gotta go to Hidden Valley High School. It just doesn't exist. Like, I'm excited, I'm ready to go. You know, I got back from Richmond, I'm driving into Hidden Valley, and, and I say that drive up to Hidden Valley High School, you can see the mountains in the backdrop. I get to look out at the mountains every day. And I feel like today, I'm on top of one of those mountains in this beautiful Roanoke Valley. And, I mean, it, it has been amazing. Like, I'm blown away. I gotta tell you, like, I've grown into this profession. Like, I went into it really because I thought it was best, you know, in starting a family. And to be kind of involved in, you know, raising my kids and their kids' lives, and have the time to do that and help. But what I really have learned is that it is just the greatest career. We've always, in Roanoke County, tried to be at the forefront of education and educational trends. And, and I think that having superintendents and having principals and having teachers that all align in those goals is something that Roanoke County is really good at. In the fall, I will be applying for the National Teacher of the Year. I don't know what that process entails yet. I know that throughout the process so far, I've had to record myself teaching to win one award. I've had to write five lengthy essay responses to win another award. So, and, you know, I've had to conduct an interview. So I don't know what it entails, but I know that I am gonna do my best to represent this state, and particularly the southwest portion of this state, and most specifically Roanoke County to the best of my ability.
Excellent video. So I'll, I'll let the Board, Board members comment, and I'll, I'll kind of close them out, and then I'll give Matt a chance to talk.
Well, I would love to jump in and just express our appreciation for your good work. And as a retired teacher myself, my husband's also a retired teacher. You know, it's not easy work. It's good work. It's rewarding work. It is family-friendly most of the time. And it is good to just know what's going on for our future by having, you know, your hand on the pulse of what's going on with our young people. So it is a great job, but you do it exceptionally well. And it was, what an honor to have you representing us for the whole state is just truly... I was thinking to myself, you know, is this the first time ever in Roanoke County history? And then it was pretty clear in the video, this is the first time. So that's just especially special. And so thank you for your good work. Thank you for sowing good seed and really being an impact to youth today. What an honor and privilege to have you in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is indeed an honor to be the first in Roanoke County. And I hope that it's true that there'll be others to follow. But you set the example, not only for the county, but for all those young people. And, you know, you can't put a price on that. You just can't. But, you know, you approach it in the way that someone who's, was meant to be a teacher and an instructor. And I just want you to know, that's what makes Roanoke County schools great and the communities great, which is why a lot of people like to move here and start a family here so you can live, work, and play and get educated. And that was one of the reasons, when I came back to Roanoke County after being gone for three years, we wanted to make sure we found a place to live in Roanoke County for the same reasons. And I only wish that my boys would have had the experience with you, but they, they went to William Burden, they had a good, good programs there, too. In fact, both of them ended up in public relations and, and today work in that field. So thank you for your contribution. Thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mahoney or Tammy, do y'all have any comments?
No, sir.
No.
All right. Okay, so I'll, I'll go ahead and kind of wind it down. So Matt and I know each other. We're really soccer chums.
You could tell from that video, I'm not a baseball guy.
So let me just, you and I just kind of have a casual conversation to kind of, kind of catch up. So Matt was the coach Hidden Valley Girls varsity team back when my daughter... So you had her on the varsity team, and you did club? Did you do club, too?
I did. I coached with what is now Virginia United, but at the time, I was with Roanoke Star. I started with Ashley Valley AFC and coached with them for two years, and then Virginia, and then Roanoke Star for, I think, about seven, seven years.
Okay, all right. So you did Hidden Valley, then we graduated. I don't know how long you stayed head coach, but you're, what are you doing now for coaching?
So I still help out. I've never, the one thing, there's two things that I kind of consistently do still. One of them is that I continue to work with the Hidden Valley Girls program. I, I'm not the head coach anymore, but when the new head coach came in, he asked me to stay on and volunteer. Well, I was an assistant. That's kind of now become a volunteer, because amazingly enough, I now have a sophomore who got pulled up to varsity towards the end of the year. So I, I have to kind of balance my time of watching him play for the boys and then the girls. And then also, I still, I have been most years, I don't know if I'm related to you, just because of conflicts, but I consistently still work Roanoke College Soccer Camp for the Roanoke College coaches and stay involved doing that. Because it's a great time. I get to work with, like, I have, like, the seven, eight, nine-year-olds during that time. So it's kind of fun to work with the youth, yeah.
All right, so let me tell you a little story. So from 2011 to 2017, construction industry was really bad. I had to become a soccer referee. So I had to referee some of Matt's games. He's the varsity coach, and here I am on the, in the field in the center. So we, we did okay.
Yeah, I grew up a lot. I will say that. You, I think, when you're young, you think you can change everything, right? As a younger coach, a younger teacher. And then you start to realize, hey, like, you know, control the controllables, right? And that's, and that's what you learn. But you're a good ref, Dave, I remember that much.
Yeah, anyway, that was fun. And then also, Matt wasn't doing enough in those young days, so he played on my over-35 7V7 team. And I was gonna try to find the photo, but I got a photo of us in our, playing one of our games at night. But Matt, we played. We were players together on the over-35 over at River's Edge. And so, so are you playing anymore?
I, I hate to say this, but I had a couple ankle injuries. And so pickleball, pickleball's my thing now. So there we go. Along with, like, 90% of Roanoke, right? So there you go.
Yeah, so I do pickleball, too. Great. Any, any comments you want to add?
Yeah, listen, I'm really appreciative of this. It's wonderful to be recognized and continue to be recognized. I will say that, that there were some really wonderful people in Richmond that made this happen. Allen Allen, Allen Allen, and Allen Law Firm. I think I got the right amount of Allens there. The Bojangles Foundation, Virginia Lottery, Mosley Architects. They gave some nice awards, but also they make it possible, because I've got a lot going on coming up here in 2026. Kind of a strange process, but I'm the 2026 Teacher of the Year. So really, January to January is when I start doing the things that I'll have to do. I get to do some really exciting things, like go to California and go to the Google campus and learn some stuff. And then I'll also get to go to DC, and I'll get to lobby. I'm kind of the voice for Virginia educators now, which is exciting. I get to go to Space Camp. And also, apparently, we'll go to the National Championship Football Game in 2027, where all the, the rest of my cohorts, as they call them, will be recognized. So, I mean, there's 54 of us, because it includes some of the U.S. territories as well. And I am just really, really honored. And, you know, I do want to say one thing. I do believe that there is a Roanoke County teacher who won Teacher of the Year at a different, while they were in a different county, but are currently at Roanoke County, which is, that's what I was told. But yeah, I guess I'm the first person to ever win it in Roanoke County while being a Roanoke County teacher. And I think that that's amazing to me, because I think our education in this county is really, really outstanding. And, you know, I'm glad to kind of, you know, break that glass ceiling, as they say, right, to be the first. But I, again, I think, I think, Mr. North, you mentioned it. I hope I am the first of many, because I really think there's a lot of educators in this area that need to be recognized.
Yeah. And, and we're so glad that you had time to... Yeah, and we're so glad that you had time to come today because everybody's, you know, sharing the Matt Neal story. So, we're so glad that you came here. So, you know, the Roanoke County citizens can know a little bit more about you. So, you've got a wider audience for the county now.
Yeah.
And that was the purpose of bringing you here and letting you, and sharing the love and the resolution with you. So, let's get some pictures and we'll get this wrapped up.
Thank you.
You want us right over here, Craig?
Yep.
Okay.
You're staying.
Yeah, right back here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause, Teacher of the Year in Virginia.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You got it.
Matt, I'll call you later and ask you what kind of referee Mr. Radford really was.
He was good, he was good. He played the game, we tell him.
Okay, we move to Item Two, Proclamation declaring June 16 through the 24, 2025 as National Waste and Recycling Workers Week. In the county of Roanoke, I invite Asha King, Director of General Services, and her staff to come forward. Y'all got to stand up and come this way. You just can't sit there and look purty.
You all know I'm not shy, so please join me. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I cannot tell you how ecstatic I am to bring so many of the folks on our Solid Waste Team with us today and how frustrated we are for this proclamation.
Great, okay. We're going to get the clerk to read the proclamation.
Proclamation declaring June 16 through 24, 2025 as National Waste and Recycling Workers Week in the county of Roanoke. Whereas, National Waste and Recycling Workers Week is recognized each year as a time to honor the essential contributions of waste and recycling professionals to the quality of life in Roanoke County. And whereas the employees of General Services Solid Waste Division work industriously to keep Roanoke County healthy, clean, and beautiful. And whereas these employees provide weekly curbside trash collection to our residents in many businesses. And whereas bi-weekly curbside bulk and brush collection are performed by these employees for our residents without the need to schedule an appointment. And whereas these employees collect recyclables from six drop-off locations across our county. And whereas the commitment exhibited by these employees to collect trash, bulk, brush, and recycling regardless of the weather conditions is greatly appreciated. And whereas these employees' dedication to perform their responsibilities in a manner that prioritizes the safety of our citizens, team members, and county resources is commendable. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, do hereby proclaim National Waste and Recycling Workers Week in the county of Roanoke and call upon all residents to recognize and show appreciation for these dedicated individuals.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll approve the motion, Mr. Chair.
And I'll second.
All right, motion second, any discussion?
Yes, I would love to make a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. I think that the work that you do is so valuable, and often the public takes it for granted. And if you all didn't show up for work, we'd hear about it. We would definitely hear about it. But I think that a couple of words that came to my mind when I was thinking about the work that you do is that you're very responsive and you're very appreciated. It's really amazing when you look at the whole state of Virginia and how many counties provide this kind of service. And I think we are pretty much the Lone Rangers in that field. So, Ashley keeps me updated on those kinds of statistics. And we truly appreciate what you do. It's not an easy work, and it's, on days like today, it's oppressive even. And you all are still doing it, and we truly appreciate you. Ashley King, she is like a hero amongst us because she really takes seriously what the citizens say and is responsive, and we appreciate you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've got a comment.
Go ahead.
I just want you to know that my grandson, who's two years and eight months today, goes to the window every Thursday looking for you guys. And if you haven't shown up by a certain time, he gets worried that he's missed. And Ashley knows that to be a fact too. So, between school bus and the waste vehicles, he's looking out for you. So, every now and again, he goes outside, he says, "He didn't wave." So, you give him the address, whoever drives that route, if they would just wave every now and again and bake his day, and his grandmother's too. So, thank you very much for what you do in Roanoke County, helping to keep it beautiful, but also making it another reason, in addition to schools, why we like to say Roanoke County is a great place to live, work, and play and raise a family. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to add to the comments. So, my wife loves you because we recycle everything. So, when we roll the can out, there's very little in the can. But the recycling is a big part to our community, the five stations that we have. Who handles the recycling here? Just pick those up. Okay. Love, love, you know, all the areas that we go to. My wife and I use the one over near Cox Gable, over in that area. And then, does everybody else pick up the debris every two weeks?
So, by show of hands, the folks working Knuckle Boom.
Okay.
And then, we also have several bulk collectors here today. And then also our bandit drivers.
Okay. I was going to make where I live on Long Ridge, I got a neighbor, you know, the guy must deforest the entire mountainside, but every month, he's got six little piles right there. So, I don't know if you've had to recognize that row or not. That guy, I don't know. But anyway, it's very appreciative. And we use that a lot when we're amongst other counties and localities about the service that we have and what it does for our community. It makes it look cleaner and neater. So, thank you, Ashley, for bringing your crew here. So, I'm going to stop for a minute and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. And Ashley, you got any comments to add or any of the staff?
One thing I would just like to add again is thank you all for this recognition because I cannot begin to share with you how much I so appreciate everything these guys do on a regular basis. And I apologize to get a little emotional about it, but they're just so awesome. I cannot begin to tell you. And so, I hope you all know how wonderful you are and how great the service you provide is. So, thank you.
If everybody can come here, we're going to get a picture and kind of face that way. I know, yeah. We need more sunflowers over here.
Everybody squeeze up a little bit.
You guys on this side, show me your right shoulder. You guys over here, show me your left shoulder. Scoot your hand.
You sure that's got a wide-angle lens?
Yes. I'll have to wear my sunglasses with the... Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate what you do.
Now, we move to Item D, Public Hearing, to receive comments on the proposals submitted for the redevelopment of the Hollins Library located at 6624 Peters Creek Road in the county of Roanoke. Tax ID number, do I need to read that tax ID number? Okay, thank you. Rachel Lauer, Deputy County Attorney, welcome.
Thank you. And just to clarify, we're here on behalf, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just to clarify, we're here on behalf of 6624 Peters Creek Road in the county of Roanoke, tax ID number 27.14-01-03.00-0000. As the board is aware, on June 10th, you adopted a resolution authorizing the use of competitive negotiation and the procurement of professional services for the redevelopment of the Hollins Library pursuant to the Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002, which act is often referred to as the PPEA. The PPEA allows public entities to create public-private partnerships for the development of projects that will benefit the community. To quickly review, the board received and accepted an unsolicited proposal pursuant to the PPEA for the redevelopment of the Hollins Library, which building is located, again, at 6624 Peters Creek Road. Thereafter, the county pursuant to our adopted PPEA guidelines solicited competing proposals for the project, and a single competing proposal was received. In the board's recent resolution, you approved the procurement process of competitive negotiation for professional services regarding this project. Today, I'm not going to share detailed information regarding both proposals received. Both are posted on the county's purchasing website. A statutorily required step of the county's PPEA guidelines is to involve the public by holding a public hearing. The guidelines require that after proposals are received, at some point during the review process, but at least 30 days prior to the county entering into an agreement, the county shall hold a public hearing on the proposals that have been received. Notice of this hearing was published, and interested members of the public were invited to review the proposals online and to submit comments to the board today. I now invite the board to receive any comments that members of the public may wish to share, and such comments can certainly be considered by staff as they continue with the negotiations process. Following the receipt of any such comments today, the board does not need to take any action.
Any questions for Ms. Lauer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was easy. So, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Do we have anybody here to speak? Okay. And then, at this time, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Lauer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move to Item E, First Reading of Ordinance. Number one, ordinance amending Chapter 8.1 of the Erosion and Stormwater Management Program of the Roanoke County Code to incorporate new lot drainage requirements on site plans and plot plans. I invite Mr. Blunt, Assistant County Attorney, and Tark Monier, Director of Development Services, for the first reading and request for a second reading. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Last summer, the Board of Supervisors asked staff to work with the Roanoke Valley Regional Home Builders Association to develop language to revise the current lot drainage requirements in Roanoke County. Staff have worked with the home builders over the last 12 months to develop the changes to the lot drainage ordinances that will help our homeowners but also is reasonable for our builders. The Home Builders Association is supportive of the proposed changes for your consideration today. Much of the discussion about lot drainage has revolved around plot plan development. While we will always have drainage issues with subdivision development, especially after significant weather events, this has improved over the last three years. Where we still have challenges is with single lot development in established neighborhoods or on lots with steep slopes. Mr. Kaywood, Ms. Lauer, Mr. Monier, and myself have worked with the Home Builders Association's Legislative Committee comprised of local builders and engineers to propose the following lot drainage changes in your board report. To change lot drainage requirements in county code, Chapter 30 of the zoning ordinance and Chapter 8.1 of the Erosion and Stormwater Management Program must be amended. Later in your agenda today, the second reading will occur for amending Chapter 30 of the zoning ordinance. Under Chapter 8.1, the following areas are being recommended to be updated. First is the finished floor elevation documentation and verification. Second is the plot plan field survey certification. And then, third is steep slope documentation. Mr. Monier will address the specific changes for each area in just a few minutes, and then Mr. Monier, Ms. Lauer, and myself will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I would like to take a moment to thank the Roanoke Valley Regional Home Builders Association for spending a significant amount of time working with Roanoke County on this project. I'd also like to thank many of our citizens that provided very important input into this topic, as well as our development services staff that spent many hours researching options. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Mr. Radford for facilitating many of our discussions with the home builders. The recommended ordinance changes for Chapter 8.1 and Chapter 30 are proposed to go into effect on August 1st, 2025. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Monier to walk through the specific recommendations with you.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and member of the board. My section here of the presentation will be referencing Chapter 8.1 as stated earlier that we have some revisions that I will go over them one by one, and all of them are outlined in the ordinance attached to your report. These revisions aim to better support homeowners while remaining practical and reasonable for our local builders. The key areas, as Mr. Blunt mentioned, number one, documentations and verifications of finished floor elevation, which we will refer to it as FFE. The finished floor elevations must be clearly documented on the site plan or the plot plans that provided for review on the plans, and it will be verified by the staff. And we will have a tolerance of approximately six inches for verifications. The second area, the second key area, is certifications of field surveys for plot plans. The plot plans provided for plan review and permitting must demonstrate positive drainage away from all permanent structures. Plot plans must include an adequate and current field survey with two options. Option one, if the development disturbs more than 5,000 square feet, the plot plan must be prepared by a licensed professional, that can be an engineer, architect, land surveyor, or landscape architect registered in the state of Virginia. Option B, developments disturbing 10,000 square feet or more on parcels of one acre or larger are exempt from this survey requirement unless otherwise directed by the Director of the Development Services. The third area for key areas for review is for amendment is steep slopes. Under steep slopes, portion of the ordinance, it shows that all development on steep slopes must comply with the Stormwater Management Design Manual. Two, an as-built survey by licensed professionals is required for any steep slope with vertical heights of 20 feet or more or a slope ratio of 2:1 or steeper regardless of the height. Number three, stormwater management plans for review for steep slopes must include the following: diversion structures at the top of the slope to prevent stormwater from flowing onto the steep area. B, reverse benches installed at vertical intervals, not exceeding 20 feet to collect runoff. And C, conveyance systems that direct stormwater to suitable outfalls. And the fourth point under steep slope is no more than two reverse benches are permitted per parcel. These recommendations are outlined in the attached ordinance in many areas. The staff recommends adoption of the ordinance in the first reading and setting the second reading and a public hearing for July 8, 2025. Would be happy to answer any questions along with everybody here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me first correct. I introduced Mr. Blunt as the wrong... He's the Assistant County Administrator, not the attorney.
I only practice law in the state.
I only practice law in the state of Virginia.
That's what I thought.
Looks like an attorney to me.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blunt?
No, sir.
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. I just want you to know that this subject resonated in Mr. Peters, who's now our sixth supervisor, Mr. Jason Peters, and myself. We kind of had instances and examples of this concerning citizens, and I think it was three years ago, July 4th, maybe it was 4. I want to think it's 3. But Tarek and I, we got lit up like a Christmas tree on that hot day, much like today's outside, and we had an instance that this ordinance will now address going forwards. And I just want to say that while things do take a while in government, I am appreciative of the home builders' resolve in working with the county and bringing this to fruition because as long as I was on the Board, I was going to keep pushing for it to go into effect one day, and I look forward to that date in August. And I want to thank each and every one of you and your staffs for working on this, and Mr. Radford for your guidance through the home builders. I know that that was challenging, and I can think that we're blessed to have you on the Board in that regard. So, good work. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and then, you know, my follow-up comments. Sometimes it's like herding cats, but it took a while to get consensus with our HBA. A lot of those builders were already doing all this. So we basically have memorialized this in writing.
Right.
Okay? So, we were doing it, and there were some that were not doing it correctly. This will help give the county a little more control for infill lots, more than just regular lots. So, that's a good checkoff for the county, to give you the tools, you know, to do those inspections and make sure we keep water where it's not supposed to go. So, glad we're finally here. Any further comments? Any comment from Mr. Mahoney or Ms. Shepherd? Any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. I just think this is a good first step, that this with the next ordinance that we're going to be dealing with, I think this will help resolve some of the problems that we've heard from citizens in the past, and I'm glad we're able to bring everybody together to develop a really good program. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney.
No questions for me.
All right. Thank you, Tammy. And one last thing. Memorial Day weekend, I made a trip out to Portland, Oregon for a race for my son. We have nothing compared to their steep slopes. We went to the race course, and there's a house here on a mountain, and the other house is right below it. The slope is like this, straight down. Of course, it's all rock, and you have to, there's no dirt, but tremendous how they do their steep slopes out in Portland. Anyway, do we have a motion to approve the first reading?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Thank you.
We move to Item F, second reading of ordinance. Ordinance authorizing employee bonuses totaling $1,082,392 funded from reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Virginia and amending the general fund fiscal year 2025 and 2026 operating revenues and expenditures. Richard L. Kaywood, County Administrator, this is the second reading. Welcome, Mr. Kaywood.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. We do have one change in this item from the first reading. Somewhat to our surprise, we received a correspondence from the Virginia Department of Elections just after our meeting, our last meeting, and it included some language about providing specific bonus payments for the Electoral Board Secretary, Chairman, Vice Chairman, so we have included that. It's only a few hundred dollars for those changes. Otherwise unchanged, and just one note, particularly for any employees who may be listening, every year we send out a notice to each employee that's receiving the cross-the-board pay raise, what their new salary will be. We will also include the calculation for their bonus, so folks don't have to do math as those numbers will be based on their, you know, today's salary, not the new salary. So just so everybody will have everything on one sheet of paper, assuming your affirmative action this afternoon, that will go out very shortly to employees.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaywood. Any questions for Mr. Kaywood?
No questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Approve the motion.
And a second?
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Thank you. We move to Item G, second reading of ordinances and public hearings. Item one, ordinance to adjust the salaries of the members of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County by applying a 3% inflation factor pursuant to Section 3.07 of the Roanoke County Charter and Section 15.2-1414.3 of the Code of Virginia.
Rachel Lauer, Deputy County Attorney, second reading and public hearing. Welcome again, Ms. Lauer.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. It is proposed that the Board adopt an ordinance to adjust its salaries for inflation pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 15.21414.3. This section of the state code and Section 3.07 of the County Charter requires that any increase in supervisor salaries be accomplished by ordinance after a public hearing to occur between May 1 and June 30. Any increase is limited to an annual 5% inflation factor. The Board has not adjusted its salaries for inflation since 2022. The current salary for Board members is $19,222.32. This ordinance would increase the salary effective July 1, 2025, for Board members to $19,798.99 for an increase of $576.67 each. There have been no changes since the first reading held on June 10, 2025.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Lauer? Okay. In hearing none, we're going to open the public hearing for comments from the public. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay. In hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I move--
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance that's at G1. This ordinance would increase the salaries of members of the Board of Supervisors by a 3% inflation factor.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. North. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
No.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Thank you.
We move to Item 2, ordinance amending Article 5 Development Standards of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance Regarding the Lot Drainage Requirements on Site Plans and Plot Plans. Doug Blunt, Assistant County Administrator, and Rachel Lauer, Deputy County Attorney, second reading and public hearing. Again, welcome, Mr. Blunt.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I will do my best to be Philip Thompson this afternoon. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed lot drainage amendments to the zoning ordinance on June 3, 2025. The proposed amendments would amend site development plans in Article 5 regarding the information required on site plans, the format of plans, and the minimum standards and improvements required addressing individual lot drainage, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control. The proposed amendments would also amend plot plans in Article 5 addressing individual lot drainage, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control. Staff provided background on the issues with lot drainage over the last few years and an overview of the process to develop these zoning ordinance amendments, including working with the Roanoke Regional Home Builders Association. Mr. Monier and I answered specific development, site development questions of the Planning Commission. No citizen spoke during the planning, during the public hearing. The Planning Commission discussed additional regulations, that these additional regulations would add to the cost of housing, a delayed process, infill lots versus lots, all being developed within a site plan, first floor evaluation, elevation requirements, what happens if bedrock alters a previously approved plot plan, land disturbing permits on large lots, and interpretation of new regulations. The Planning Commission voted 3 to 2 to approve final approval of the zoning ordinance amendments with minor amendments. The Board of Supervisors approved first reading of this ordinance at the June 10, 2025 meeting. Since first reading, we do have two proposed changes. First, in order to maintain consistency with proposed changes to Section 8.1 of Erosion and Sediment Control Program, the authority to waive certain requirements is given to Roanoke County Administrator or his designee. This was previously defined to be the Director of Development Services. And then second, the effective date of the zoning ordinance amendments will be August 1, 2025. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors, following a public hearing on the proposed amendments, approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend the Roanoke County zoning ordinance to add lot drainage requirements for site plans and plot plans. Ms. Lauer, Mr. Monier, and myself are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Blunt?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. One comment that I have. When we were going over the six-inch variation, you know, I made the comment, we're more than five acres. I had to adjust a house two feet because of bedrock. So, you know, I want my fellow board member, or builders, anybody that's going to be building, you're not tied to that six inches if it's over, you're over five acres. So, just, you know, make sure you understand that.
Mr. Chairman--
Yes.
--any changes due to conditions of the site--
Right.
--can be amended, so the plans can come back and for review--
Yes.
--and can be amended.
Even if it's greater than six inches?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, appreciate that comment. Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Hold it. Did I do the open the hearing yet?
Got to do that.
Okay. Yep. So, we're going to open the public hearing. Thank you, Martha. Do we have anyone that--
No, sir.
Okay, we have nobody, so we're going to close the public hearing. So at this point, do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll move Item G2, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I will second that. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Thank you.
We move to Item H, appointments. Do any Board members have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk and included in the board report for agenda, Item H?
No, sir.
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Very good. Move to Item 1, Roanoke County Towing Advisory Board. Is there a motion to approve the list of appointments set forth in the board report?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Got a second. Thank you. Got a second from Mr. North. Any discussion? Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Abstain.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
All right. We move to Item I, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered by the Board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form of forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Does any Board member wish to remove any item from the Consent Agenda for discussion?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt all matters in the Consent Agenda?
Move the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. We move to Item J, Citizen Comments and Communications.
Are there any citizens wanting to address the Board that have submitted a form?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we will move to Item K. Is there a motion to receive and file the reports that have been included with the agenda under Item K?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
We move to Item L, Reports and Inquiries of Board Members. First one up is Mr. Mahoney.
I'll pass right this afternoon, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tammy, you're second.
I'll pass today as well. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. North?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of comments here. On June 17, attended and spoke at the VBR Virginia Blue Ridge Event at Elmwood Park along with Ms. Shepherd, who was in attendance, as well as County Administrator Kaywood and others. On the 25 USA Cycling Endurance Mountain biking championship course reveals where mountains meet adventure, starting July 14 through the 20, and with cross-country races in Roanoke County at Explorer Park, July 18 through the 20. And I encourage everyone to come out for that event. It should be a great, great time in the Roanoke Valley area, the city, as well as in the county with these races. And there were a lot of racers there that day, too. So it was exciting, and the reveal was showing the routes of all the six different races or six different categories. Later on, June 17, that afternoon, attended the Corillian Crystal Spring Tower ribbon cutting to celebrate the new state-of-the-art facility for emergency room care, which is now open, as well as advanced heart care, which soon will be open in mid-July. It's quite a nice tour, too, of those fantastic facilities. There's even a second helicopter pad on the roof of this new structure so that a lifeguard ten can come to the hospital if they are needed. On June 19, I attended the expansion of Leonard's Truck in the Hollins District, and also Friday, June 20, the new renovated Kroger in Hollins for celebratory ribbon cutting. And I want to thank both businesses for their expansions and renovations to serve our citizens in the Hollins District as well as Roanoke County. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, by the way, just real quick, there was a press release from the Governor that came out just before I came down here. Governor Yonkin announces Virginia is the top state in the nation for customized workforce training. The Talent Accelerator Program earned number one ranking for business facilities for the third straight year, which is something to be proud of, and I think this area was probably also a part of that. And I know, Ms. Hooker, this is your area of expertise, so I'm going to share this with you so that you can enjoy the good news. Not only are we the number one state to do business with, but we're also the number one state with workforce. So that's a great, great honor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. North. Ms. Hooker?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. I got a couple of comments before we move to the next session. I attended, my wife and I attended last Saturday the Green Hill Park, Parks and Rec had a summer solstice festival. Food trucks, a band, but the big draw was the drone show. That was absolutely amazing. You know, I bet there were 3,000 people there. I got there early this time, Martha, so I could get into the park. But I took my 87-year-old mom, and she absolutely enjoyed it. She stayed late, and we watched it. So, great job, Parks and Rec. Just need more food trucks. The lines were still at the food trucks at 9:30, so big demand there. Enjoyed that. And one little piece of history, and I know our nation has gone through a lot here in the last week with security and safety for our nation, but on November 4, 1979, my wife and I, at that time she was my girlfriend, we were driving down 95 South, and I proposed to her, and she accepted. So we went a little further way down, and we turned the radio on, and we had just heard that 52 Americans had been taken hostage into Iran, Iran. So, it was a bittersweet moment at that time, and we have been living through that. So, the actions that we took, our nation took, I do feel a little more safer now. I feel-- I feel that there's still more reckoning to be done in that part of the world, but we were all affected by it, and if you were alive at that time in '79, you might remember it. But I remember that well because it just, it left a mark in my memory. So, we're hopeful and prayerful that that Middle East area will calm down, and there'll be some sense among the groups in that region because, you know, we're only here on this earth for a short time, and we might as well make the best of it. I move to Item M, Work Sessions. Item 1, Work Session to Review Key Economic Development Partners and Their Roles in Supporting Roanoke County Businesses. Megan Baker, Director of Economic Development, will lead that work session. The second work session is to discuss maintenance and beautification of Roanoke County's gateways. Mr. Blunt will handle that work session. Momentarily, the board will recess to the third floor for those work sessions. However, before doing so, I'd like to remove that the board go into a closed session upon the completion of the work sessions. So, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to Code, Section 2.2, Section 2.2, 3711A5 of the Code of Virginia for Discussion Concerning Perspective Business or Industry or the Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made of the Business or Business's Interest in Locating or Expanding Its Facility in the Community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business locations or expansion in the community, including location or expansion in each of the county's five magisterial districts. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
At this time, the board will now recess to the third floor for the work session and closed session. Thank you.